I now call the September 27th, 2016, special council meeting to order. The council members, please denote their presence by depressing their no switch.
No switch?
Simon says.
All right, I guess.
Okay, no or yes switch would be fine. All councilmen are present except for Councilman Ray Pacheco. The Chair would entertain a motion to, by minute, action, excuse the absence of Councilman Pacheco.
So moved, seconded.
Moved by Councilman Miller, seconded by Councilman Johnson. Please cast your vote and please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, the motion passes.
Thank you. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, in the name of our government, invisible with liberty and justice for all. Tonight, we would like to recognize the Casper Events Center staff for their hard work and dedication to the city of Casper. Would council members please join me at the lectern? And we will. The Casper Events Center staff, please come to the dais. So, council members behind the lectern, staff members up behind the dais. Okay. They're in order. And there are two additional names. Okay. And I will bring you up as soon as I'm done with this part. All right. Right. Okay. On behalf of the city of Casper, I and the city council would like to thank the Casper Events Center staff for the exceptional work they have done over the past 34 years. The success of the Casper Events Center is due in large part to this team's dedication and to operational excellence and their focus on an enhanced customer experience over the combined, combined staff years, 116 years. That says dedication. So, I will go over there and hand out your certificates. And Vice Mayor Kathy is going to call your names.
We should work out this blocking before.
Wouldn't work out well if I was Kendra.
Kendra Zeiler. Anna Rosberg. Jeff Walker? Nope, he's not here. I didn't think that looked like Jeff. Paul Hansen? Paul Hansen.
Outstanding.
Sherri Nelson.
She's standing in the wings. She's taking pictures.
That's Sherri Nelson over there?
Yeah.
Okay. We're gonna have to do the grip and grin later.
So some of these are out of order. The next one was Pam Cundy. The next one on my list is Christina Olson. Sharon Schrader?
She's not here.
She's not here. Okay. Andy Booth.
I know Andy, I'm just making sure that that's his.
Dana Young?
Yes.
Susan Jane? Cheryl Fisher? Elizabeth Flesvig? Galen Crowe?
Galen's? Okay.
Oh, there we go. Kendy Bucknell. And Henry Manning?
Right there. And I'm sorry, one name didn't make the list, Betsy O'Brien. Aw, shut up.
She goes by any name.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Thank you, sir, appreciate it. It was fun.
Okay.
Okay, wait, am I only, the only one that's really gonna come in two rows?
Okay, there you go. One, two, three, Casper Events Center.
Can we move ya?
It's gonna say she did it.
There she is.
I now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of the fiscal year 2017. Uh-oh.
There you go.
Oh, yeah, okay. Disregard, disregard that gavel. Council now discuss the resolution for the contract with Spectra. Because this is not on the consent agenda, it will be open for discussion. Please read the resolution by title only.
A resolution authorizing a management agreement between the city of Casper, Wyoming, and Global Spectrum LP, doing business as Spectra Venue Management for the Casper Events Center.
The Chair would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution just read.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Councilman Hopkins, seconded by Councilman Miller. City Manager Report.
Your Honor, the Casper Events Center was built in 1982, and since that date, it has been operated as an independently operated venue by a group of very dedicated employees. And much of, many of those who you see tonight, and personally, I thank them for attending this event and being, being available to receive the appreciation from the council and the management staff for all their work they've done. With the recent retirement of longtime city employee Bud Duvalla, who managed the event center for eight years, an opportunity arose to evaluate the venue being managed by a private venue management company. To that end, Spectra Venue Management was eventually selected to manage the facility. Reference calls to similar facilities resulted in very favorable references from, for Spectra. And the staff of one facility contacted indicated they wish they had, they had Spectra onboard sooner to manage their venue. The overall goal of having the event center privately managed is to reduce the amount of subsidy required for the operation of the facility, which is currently around a million dollars a year, depending on the number of shows and the performance, the financial performance of each show. With, with that goal in mind, there's also a secondary goal, and equally important, that is to retain the emphasis on providing high-quality hosting, event hosting of existing events, including Wyoming High School tournaments, College National Final Rodeo, and as well as other Wyoming-Casper-based events. Staff believes Spectra is capable of meeting these two goals. In addition to reducing the subsidy, other benefits sought by having the event center managed privately is the opportunity for city employees to continue their employment with CEC and ready access to entertainment. The employees have the opportunity to be employed by an international company, with Spectra agreeing to retain individual employees' years of service when determining vacation time, waiving any wait periods to begin accruing vacation, and have the customary complement of benefits, including health insurance and participation in Spectra's 401K plan for retirement planning. Spectra manages thousands of events annually at hundreds of locations, with two of those locations being venues in Fort Collins, Colorado, and Nampa, Idaho, and Casper is on the travel path for those. And therefore, it's possible that the shows appearing in either of those two venues might easily travel to Casper, and that's a part of the benefit is, is more readily, I don't wanna say easier, because I don't know how they, how easy the world, work world is, but when they're signing so many performances to, to so many venues, hopefully, we can take advantage of that and be in that signing circle and getting those in easier than a one-off and that, you know, all the work that Bud did and Max did before that and the prior folks of, of signing those one-appearance shows. And that's a, that's an advantage we're looking for. The terms of the contract that council considered tonight, it's a five-year contract with terminations provisions by both parties limited. We're interested in a five-year commitment, and we're interested in giving, in recommending we give Spectra five years to manage the facility. In that time, it gives them the ability to achieve what they're looking for. It won't be an overnight change, and we think it's a reasonable time. Then the contract after that, after that term can be renewed for additional five-year periods. The, there is compensation, this does cost to obtain this service. There's a fixed $130,000 a year management fee, 3% of food sales, 15% of the revenue from the sale of commercial rights, and 20% of any reduction in the net operating loss of the event center. And the 20%, all, all those items are incentive to perform. And the last one being the 20% reduction in net operating costs. If, 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 if the net operating loss moves away from a benchmark that was established at right at a million dollars, $994,000, if that comes in $100,000 less, Spectra will get a $20,000 payment, but more importantly, the city will have avoided an $80,000 subsidy that is a drain on the general fund. And there is also a refund provision that after the second year, if the subsidy goes over that benchmark number, then there's a rebate back of 50% of the overage from Spectra's fixed annual fee. The event center will be retained, the ownership of the event center will be retained by the city, it's not a transfer of ownership in any way, it's just management. The city approves the annual, Spectra's annual operating budget, its operation manual, operation manual, and the hiring of its general manager, who is here, and you'll meet in a minute if they choose to address the council on any questions you may have. There is a transition cost, and that's all the upfront ramping up cost that we've included in the contract of approximately $6, $78,000. We are believing we will recoup that cost in the long-term operation of the, of the facility and the, and the benefits that it, that promises will be realized from that. It was a challenging contract to negotiate. I think the work of Wallace Trimbath, the Assistant City Attorney, Doug Folick, Leisure Services Director, Kirk Gunderson, accountant, I almost don't want to thank the other side, but I guess I'll thank Peter and Rick and Brian and all those other names you guys had on the phone that we never saw, we don't know what they look like. And speaking of those, we have representatives of Spectra here, Peter Zangoni, the Director of Business and Development and Client Relations, he's been with us since the beginning of the proposal, Rick Hans, the Regional Manager for this area, and Brad Murphy, the newly, will be newly appointed Event Center General Manager, are with us tonight. And so the contact is before you to consider. We will, if, if it's passed, we will go out to a press conference where folks can meet the people and comments can be made by everyone and questions asked. So we, we staff recommends you adopt the resolution with, which will authorize the execution of this agreement.
Very good. Council discussion.
First of all, I'd like to welcome Spectra and, and thank all of our staff for working hard on this. I know this has been a, a major undertaking, and we appreciate all the efforts that you folks have put into it. I really think this is gonna offer, offer, offer some new horizons for the event center in both a cost to the city and an opportunity for the people in the city. And third, I would like to thank all the folks that we just had up here on stage, and we hope that next year, assuming we have our Christmas party, that you'll invite these folks up here back to help serve breakfast on Christmas.
Absolutely.
The aprons are waving.
And, and the silly routines, I'm sure, too. Who else? Councilman Powell.
I, I just think this is a win-win, and it's an exciting day for Casper. We all know that the subsidy has been a drain on our general fund for many years, and people have complained about that and, and expressed concerns about that. This, I believe this will, over time, cut into that significantly, but as others have noted, it's going to put Casper in a position to have that event center utilized as it was intended to when it was built in 1982. I also want to thank our staff for the many hours that I know Wallace and Kurt and Doug and UVH put into all of this. But I also want to credit one person who we haven't, whose name we haven't mentioned around here for quite some time, and that's our former city manager, John Patterson, who first brought up this option and encouraged council to consider it. And I think he sort of got the ball rolling, vetted this company, and, and did some reference checking, and, and did many things before we could even seriously discuss this option. And so there are many people who are responsible, but of course, even more who will benefit. And I think it's important for people to understand, this will not affect our state basketball, this will not affect CNFR. It, it, all it will do is enhance the utilization of the facility, so I know we're all excited about this, and of course, I'll be voting yes.
Councilman Miller.
I'll just share a few comments, too. I, as well as Councilman Powell, will be voting yes on this. I think it's a good opportunity to help promote a venue in Casper at, hopefully, we'll see how it ends up being in a year or so, saving us some money. I guess there's a few things I noticed through the negotiations about this thing and talking with the Spectra folks as they would come to meetings before, is they did comment on the quality of the facility and the quality of the employees, and going into that conversation, some of our questions were, well, how are you gonna maintain these facilities? And I guess what we're asking for you now, we've got the contract, we're probably gonna get a favorable vote tonight, but we still ask you is to take care of your people and take care of the place, because it's an old building, and I think you guys had commented on the condition we've kept it in. And, you know, every time I go there, I'm pretty proud that that's a facility that's in Casper and that we've been able to maintain it. And I just want to make sure that we see that. Another thing that we discussed was making sure that we keep our local events. As I said, it's gonna be really exciting to have some new events, but maintaining CNFR, maintaining the high school programs, that's really valuable for, for our city. So anyways, I support this and look forward to seeing what you guys will be able to bring to Casper.
Thank you. Who else? Councilman Humphrey.
I'm sorry, I know nobody really wants to ask this question, but did all of our amazing employees keep their jobs? Anybody take a pay cut? Thank you.
That's good. That's our job, to ask the tough questions, too. Anyone else? Councilman Haley?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Forty-five, forty-six pages of, of contract was read and, and scrutinized, and I just wanted to comment that this is a really good contract for the city, and it's a very good contract for Spectra. Spectra is incentivized to make this a profitable venue, and the city will benefit by Spectra's performance in this contract. So it, it's a good time to turn a new page and, and see what the Casper Events Center can become.
Absolutely. Thank you. Vice Mayor Kathy.
Excuse me. I would like to reiterate as well the thank yous that go out to all of those that were involved in the negotiations, the time spent by staff ensuring the Spectra people around, helping put all of this together. In answer to one of the other councilperson's questions here, all of the full-time and part-time employees that we have were offered employment positions with Spectra. They were all, they will all become vested immediately in Spectra's programs, there will be no waiting periods, they will be employed as though their seniority continues on, so they're not starting over again. So all of those things, trying to take care of the employees, which was one of our concerns as well, in the negotiations of this, it appears that they were all taken care of. And in the conversations that I have had with some of the people on various occasions, they seem to be pleased, and one of the things that I think helped this out as well is one of the other arms of Spectra is also who, for the last many years, I want to say since oh-one, maybe it was later than that, they've been doing our ticketing for us. So we have had a relationship with the Spectra, the bigger organization, which, that has been a very good rewarding experience as well. So I think this, from all aspects, appears to be a very good path forward. It also adds to the amenities that we have here in Casper, which, from a community diversity standpoint and diversifying our economy, that is one of the building blocks for attracting new businesses, new entities to town, are the amenities that we have. And this is a, a very, this is upgrading our amenity for the people coming to town. So again, I think this is a very good, good opportunity for Casper. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And I would just like it noted that I took three pages of notes on the Spectra, Spectra contract, and it was said that, you know, it was a good contract for the city, but I'm telling you, Comcast Spectacore can write a contract. And, yeah, it was pretty tough. And it was a good negotiation, I believe Wallace Trimbath told me there were 16 versions of this contract. And just a little side note, Wallace told me that the type, the typos that you noted, I also noted. So I want at least a little attention for being a detail-oriented person. You and Wayne have stolen that honor. So, yes, it, it is good, and as, as much as the, the legal legals worked on that, I think it really does provide incentive for Spectacore Comcast to, to really turn this into the next level of venue. I learned from the contract that we got roughly 8,300 seats in that facility, and quite frankly, we, we had to let Bud retire. We had to. He worked for us 30 years. We had to let the man retire. And so this, this is, this is forward progress, and maybe with the Comcast Spectacore gravitas, we can get some big names, and we don't have to jump through a lot of the booking hoops that we would normally have to if we were on our own. So this is a really good, a good, good step toward future prosperity for our little facility on the hill. And I, too, am quite grateful. So...
May I say one more thing?
Certainly.
Since you mentioned Bud, I think his, his role in all of this maybe been underplayed, and, and I think one thing we should all recognize is those 30 years of service and the yeoman work that Bud did running that facility as an independent operation for many years with all of the challenges of booking acts and getting things to a place like Casper when it wasn't on the map for a lot of these tours. And, and I think people have sometimes commented on why isn't the event center utilized more? Why don't we get more acts? I think it's amazing how much Bud brought to the event center and, and the things that he was able to accomplish with that facility over 30 years. And it's, it's the end of an era, but we really, we really can't thank Bud enough, and I hope he's out there watching. Here's Bud.
I'll stand for Bud. Any more discussion? City Attorney Trimbath, do we need an amendment for that typo? That last one?
In answer to that, no.
Okay. Okay, just, just checking because...
It has been corrected in the record, and that's what...
It has been corrected and recorded, and that's what we'll be voting on.
Right. That was a typo you didn't find, but I did.
I told him after we got past page twelve, either it just put me to sleep or whatever.
Absolutely. So no amendments? Any more discussion? Please cast your vote for the Spectacore contract. Please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, the motion passes.
Very good. All right, that misplaced gavel sound, it's back. I now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of the fiscal year 2017 budget adjustments related to the Casper Event Center. City Attorney, do you have any exhibits?
I do, Your Honor. I have two exhibits for this item. Exhibit number one being correspondence from Kirk Gunderson to V.H. McDonald, that document dated September twenty-seventh, two thousand sixteen. And exhibit number two, that being the affidavit of publication as published in the Casper Star Tribune dated September sixteenth, two thousand sixteen.
City Manager McDonald, your report, please.
Your Honor, as just reported, with the passage of the Spectra contract, that comes with a cost, and so we have estimated the first year's management fees. And so our staff is requesting and recommending a budget amendment to the general fund of one-hundred-and-twenty-thousand, forty-five dollars, and that will be funded out of reserves, and that amount will be transferred to the event center to pay for those management fees for the first year. There is also a like increase in the event center of the same amount, one-hundred-and-twenty-thousand, forty-five dollars that will be spent for those management fees. And that will be out of, it's an accounting thing, that will be out of unanticipated revenue for the general fund. So it appears like it's doubled up, but it's only, it's one amount for two funds.
Okay. Thank you. At this time, I would like those individuals who wish to speak in favor of the fiscal year 2017 budget adjustments to please approach the lectern. Anyone to speak in favor? At this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition to the fiscal year 2017 budget adjustments to please approach the lectern. Anyone to speak opposition? Going once. Okay. There being no others or no one to speak either for or against the fiscal year 2017 budget adjustment, I now declare the public hearing closed. Chair would entertain a motion to, by resolution, authorize fiscal year 2017 budget adjustments related to the Casper Events Center. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Vice Mayor Kathy, seconded by Councilman Johnson. Councilman Haley.
Reluctant to bring this up, but Mr. Mayor, the city manager mentioned earlier that there's a transitional expense of approximately seventy-eight thousand dollars, and I'm curious why that additional expense is not included in the budget amendment.
We are, we're looking forward to start normal operating budget to cover that through the year. We know, we know this is out there, we know that seventy-eight thousand dollars is out there, but we also know that there's cost savings that may occur during the year, and we'd look for those. If not, you may see a budget amendment in the spring to cover those costs.
Okay.
Request.
So the short answer is optimism.
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you. Any more questions? Any more discussion? Any amendments? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, the motion passes.
At this time, we ask council members to bring forward relevant concerns or items of interest. And we've had a tradition of going around as you would pass a peace pipe in a teepee. Do we want to change the direction or just go with? Go. Councilman Powell.
I have nothing to add, Your Honor.
Councilman Hopkins.
A couple of quick items. We had an MPO meeting this week, and in the MPO meeting, we discussed what's known as the FAST Act, that's fixing America's surface transportation system. And the city of Cheyenne and the city of Casper were both awarded dollars which will be allocated to, I believe it was ten or eleven projects in Casper, and I don't know what Cheyenne is doing with theirs, but this is money that was allocated recently that I think it actually replaced some other money. So we took a look at that, and that's going to happen. Another thing that we did in the MPO is we had, Six Mile Road originally was designated as an intermodal connector, which is a fairly high-grade street, and it has been changed to what's known as a major connector. And that is just to make it more consistent with the highway department plans for connecting streets together and making that work. The other thing we have, I think coming up on, for the OYD on October seventeenth, roughly, we are going to have kind of an opening for the east end of the work that was just done on Yellowstone Street. So I think that's the date. I don't see, is that right? Yeah. So we're going to invite everybody, like to invite everybody down for the grand opening of the east end of Yellowstone Street. That'd be in the afternoon, like four-ish. I think that's it, sir.
Thank you. Councilman Miller.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just one quick mention. This past Saturday, we had our Platte River Revival Volunteer Day, and it was, it was quite a fun day, and I don't know if anyone remembers what the weather was like. So we were out there kind of sitting in the rain, and I actually had a really good time. And it was kind of our role just to help people get signed in and coordinate where people were going. But one thing that I saw about this, it was really great to see, even on a day like that, we still had a pretty darn good turnout. And I don't know what the final numbers were being, and I'm sure it's not as much as if it were, was, if it was going to be a nice day, but it was still really cool to see those people show up to come help us keep our river clean. And I know in the, in the past, this has been a project with growing support, and it was just really neat for me to be there to see that despite the conditions. So two people to thank, all the volunteers who showed up to spend their time doing that. And then the other group to thank is the city staff, because I don't think this would happen without the coordination of them being able to put this event in the, in the, in the place. So good job, keep it up, and we'll see you out there next time.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilman Humphrey.
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
Councilman Haley.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to second Councilman Miller's thoughts on the Platte River Revival. We had quite a large turnout for the weather, and I really wanted to thank the community for coming out and helping clean up community assets. It was a really great day, despite the rain. Second, I just wanted to throw a nod out to the Food for Thought Organization, who puts together Community Garden. Last Saturday, they had a community garden tour and dinner. It was a very nice event that Executive Director Jamie Purcell and their organization put together, and I'd like to recognize them for their, for the critical and good work that the Food for Thought Organization does for this community. Please look them up and support them. They're doing great work. They're making sure that students go to school well-fed and nourished, and that helps our students learn. This finally is a reflection, last week, we honored Brian Scott with a moment of silence, but in his day-to-day conversations, to me, he exemplified the true characteristics of civility. And I believe the Casper community really does reflect that mentality of civility. That's one of the reasons why I like to be here. You see it in the relationship between our citizens and our law enforcement community. And I just want to share that there is an opportunity for you to show your appreciation to the law enforcement community. This Thursday night at the Yellowstone Garage, there will be a Blue Ribbon BBQ. It's an appreciation for our law enforcement community, local, county, state, all included are invited for a free dinner, and the community is welcome to come out and share that evening. Looks like the weather will be great, so please consider this an opportunity to come and show your appreciation to the law enforcement.
Where, when again?
It's the Yellowstone Garage from five to eight P.M.
And that's on K Street?
On Yellowstone.
Okay.
Yellowstone Garage.
I went somewhere else. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Five hundred at the Platte River cleanup.
Five hundred?
Oh, wow.
Well, I was there as well, so five hundred souls out there in the freezing drizzle, that's pretty good. Councilman Johnson.
I had a convention and visitors bureau meeting today. There is a vacancy on the board, so they're accepting applications through October. You need to submit them to the county commission. So if anyone's interested in volunteering their time to serve on the convention and visitors bureau board, that there is a position open. That's all I have.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Kathy.
First of all, we've mentioned the river revival. A big thank you goes out to all of the city staff, and particularly those that spent their Saturday for Volunteer Day that were out there, the planning that went into that, also to the Rotary for having their people there, trying to head the groups up. We owe them a thank you as well. And yes, I had received an email earlier today that had indicated there were five hundred people that were registered. So again, for such a crummy day, as far as weather was concerned, I think the ducks liked it quite nicely. But we do appreciate all of the citizens coming out. It shows the support for the river. One other thing, on the sad note, we did lose Mr. Scott this week. He will be a loss to the city, to the state as well, and to all of the organizations that he's helped support through his fundraising. And I think the city owes the Gamroth family a debt of gratitude for sharing him and his life with us. That was a big thing for them. Onto another note, Generation Casper. That is the long-range plan that's coming up. We are trying to get community input, part of the comprehensive plan. A successful comprehensive plan is values-based, vision-driven, and outcomes-oriented. And if we don't know the vision of the citizens, it's tough to get some of the rest of it through there with their values. We have three events coming up, starting Monday, October the third, at CY Middle School, and that is a pizza party, and that's free. So come out, come let us know your thoughts. The next one is then Tuesday night, October the fourth, at the Senior Center, Ice Cream Social. The third is Wednesday, October the fifth, at the Intimate, Imitate the Image Church, which is in North Casper. So we have the Senior Center, which is downtown, we have CY Middle School on the west, and we have the Baptist Church, or the Image Church in North Casper. All three of those are having food served at those locations. They are all, I'm sorry. Monday night, the pizza party is from five to seven. Tuesday, at the Senior Center, it's from one to three. And Wednesday, it's from five-thirty to seven-thirty. Please come to one, you can come to all, but we are interested in community input. Please come, please give us your opinions, your thoughts, your ideas. This is what will drive the rest of the long-range plan. Please come. Thank you.
Thank you. I, too, attended the Platte River cleanup, and it was cold and rainy the entire time. It's kind of hard to impress constituents when you're standing there shivering and wet. But it was about the river, so it was actually a lot of fun. The Public Utilities Meeting was canceled for tomorrow. There's another event that I'll go to, and as we know, it's, it's all about communication. Because we have already concluded, we did, right? Concluded the work session, we, we will adjourn, and we can adjourn that, this special meeting. So the chair would entertain, oh, by the way, there is a media availability session in the lobby, so if you want to meet the movers and shakers of Comcast, or talk to us, or just see what's going on, or interject comments, or ask questions, you are welcome to do so. So the chair would entertain a motion, it's in the lobby after this. Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn the special council meeting.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Vice Mayor Kathy. Please cast your votes. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, the motion passes.
This meeting is adjourned.